How are you?
How old's your pup?
Nine weeks, that's why she's with.
Yeah, yeah. Is, are you training for hunting dog?
Her folks were hunting dogs, but we're thinking maybe a therapy dog.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, nice. Yeah, she's, she looks pretty big for nine weeks.
Fifteen pounds.
That's a big pup.
Sure.
Hello there.
Hi, how are you, Phil?
I'm good, how are you doing?
I'm doing well.
Good. Very nice to meet everyone tonight. I think it's gonna be nice to be able to kind of put games in faces.
Yeah, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
I'm gonna mute and stop my video and eat my dinner and then I'll jump back on.
You do that, that's fine. So Matthew, what's the puppy's name?
This is Maple.
Maple, that's a good name.
I mean, we had to. The other dog is Alder.
Yeah. Do you have another one? What's, what's the other dog?
He's a medium sized brown dog, eight seven.
Ah, okay. Hello, Tim.
Hey guys, I'll be chairing the meeting today in Danu's absence. I see it looks like we just got Candace and Chris on. Why don't we wait a few more minutes and see if anybody else signs in before we get started?
So there's a familiar face.
Natalie.
Hello.
Thanks for being.
Absolutely.
Just checking to see if my mic's on, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good to see you, Phil.
Good to see you too. I said it's nice to have a familiar face in the crowd.
Yeah, yeah. We usually see each other at the, at the rec place.
Yeah, or I see you walking your puppy.
Oh, yeah.
Have you been coming in to work out? I haven't seen you lately.
I am actually at a friend's house. She had to go to England for like a month.
Oh.
So I'm sitting her dog.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, just let's wait till five after and then we'll get started. I hadn't heard of anybody else that wasn't going to be able to attend, so hopefully we'll get a couple more.
So I'm seeing Rebecca, Christina, Natalie, Tim, Phil, myself, and Matthew. Is there anyone else there?
Not yet.
Okay.
All right, well, let's get started. I'll call the meeting to order. As, let's see, Candace, thanks, you've already taken a row call, but let's take a look again. We've got Phil on standing in for Jillian today and also here to give us a pool report, and we've got Matthew Nelson as well there to assist. We've got our council liaison Natalie Johnson, Rebecca Wood, and Chris Grow, and Candace Craig are present. So thanks, everybody, for attending. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at the agenda for this evening? And if so, does anyone have any additions or questions?
Nope, but I moved to approve the agenda.
Thanks, Rebecca. Okay, if there aren't any, any additions or questions about the agenda, we get a second and I'll assume that everybody is on board and we'll move forward.
I can second.
Great, thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Okay, and next minutes, I review the minutes. They're part of our packet from our last meeting. I don't have any additions or corrections to make. Does anyone else? In that case, I'll submit the meetings, I'm sorry, the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Great, thanks. Any objections to moving forward? No? Okay, great. Public comments, doesn't look like we've got anybody on unless there's something I don't know about. No last minute. Great. Next, then, let's move on to our presentations. Pool update, Phil.
Yeah, thank you. It's very nice to be able to attend a meeting. It's been a while since I've been at a Parks and Rec advisory board meeting. I did that quite a bit in my old position, but it's nice to, to get, jump back in and it's still everybody. The pool is doing extremely well. Right now, we are on schedule. We have a lot of different things that are happening right now, which the locker rooms have, I've been providing a lot of different updates with, you know, Facebook and also on the city website, but ultimately, we're right now at the stage of doing plumbing. We have already gone through full demolition of all the sinks, toilets, you know, shower areas, et cetera. And so those, those are all now demolished and naturally we are just an empty shell. But with that being said, we've had to tear into concrete and tear out the flooring. We've had to actually take down some walls to be able to actually put in the plumbing appropriately and also make sure that we have to, of course, remove the flooring so we can put in plumbing for drainage. We're currently now setting up the actual piping for the showers because the showers are no longer going to be game showers, they're going to be actually stalls. So we'll have individual shower stalls in each one of the shower areas for the men's and women's locker rooms. And of course, new fixtures in all areas. Right now, we are getting ready for compaction, so we're actually gonna dig out a little bit of the, the underground and try to get some new material in, get some compaction going, then we're gonna actually get some new concrete in and then we'll be starting to work on, you know, putting in the new walls and, and getting the plumbing stalls and all those, or the shower stalls, items like that put into place. We are, we get run into a few bumps in the road, which were when we started doing some of the demolition. The HVAC system here is underground and we had found that a lot of the underground ventilation has collapsed. And so there wasn't a lot of actual heating taking place within the building and we had issues with that since I've been. So last winter, we did have run into some problems of getting the, the facility heated properly. So we're now running ventilation up through the actual ceiling areas and we're abandoning everything underground with through just ground shifting. I think that's probably what caused the majority of the damage. But now we're actually looking at a different plan and so we're gonna be running HVAC up through the attic area down and dropping down, just like we're dropping down with the piping for the plumbing in, in the facility. Once that's all accomplished, then we'll be putting in new flooring, new lockers, new fixtures, and trying to, more or less, try to get the project finalized by mid-November. It'll all be based, right now, the plan is to have it ready by, I think, November 10th. But I think that we're probably gonna have to look at the possibility of extending the project because of the unforeseen item of the ventilation, so we have to now reroute that. We just got engineering design in and we're now starting to get contractors to give us pricing and what the timeline will look like for the installation. I have to estimate that we'll probably have to extend the project maybe by a couple of weeks and we could be looking at the, an opening in December. But we'll see what that looks like. I hope we will have more information by the end of this week. Trying to think of anything else that's jumping out. Right now, I think the project is going extremely well. You know, other than unforeseen items, that happens in every construction project I've ever worked on, so I think that we're in really good shape and we have a really good team of of contractors at RGC and our also subs. So I think that things are going well. Do you guys have any questions for me about the project?
I don't, thank you, Phil. That's, that's, that sounds discouraging with, when you find changes like that or find unforeseen damages like that, but it sounds like you guys are pushing through.
Yeah. Well, just to give one more quick update is that the staff here is really working hard. We've already winterized the outdoor kiddie pool. We've done an acid wash and cleaned up the, the actual outdoor adult spa. We're gonna reseal all the floors and actually repaint the coping stones with epoxy paint. We've already now put, I'll put installed some new lighting within the pool area to brighten it up a little bit and ultimately refurbishing a lot of the equipment in the actual pool area. So the internal staff, the staff that we have here, we're working really hard on trying to make our own improvements and, and trying to, you know, get things on track to be able to improve the aesthetics of the facility. So a lot of things happening, contractors working, staff working, but I, I'm really proud of how things are going and I think we're gonna make a big difference once we actually get the facility open.
Great. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, thanks again, Phil.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, let's move on to our reports. Tell you the truth, I'm not sure exactly what we should put in there under the Parks and Rec report. I think that will be back down under Director's Report, Matthew. You guys will be. Anybody else have anything else to add in?
I think Phil was gonna fill in for Jillian as far as.
Oh, Phil is, okay, great.
Yeah, now I got, I got the correct reports sitting here in front of me. I just didn't, you guys are waiting. Yeah, now I got, I got the correct reports sitting here in front of me. I just didn't know if you guys were, uh, when, when you were going to get to it.
Right, normally that would be after this. I know Gillian had asked if you could go earlier in the meeting for the pool update. Do you have a time restriction? Would it be better for you to do your, your bit now?
I'm here for the whole meeting.
Oh, okay. All right, very well then. Let's move on then to our council liaison Natalie. Did you have a report this evening?
I'm sure. I don't have too much. Um, council did pass, I believe it's phase two of the Soda Springs Park, plan, and so we're moving forward with that. Um, unfortunately, I missed the, uh, what is it, Outlook Park? I missed the Higginbotham Flats community conversation. I had a school board meeting, but I'm looking forward to hearing about that. Um, we do have a budget meeting on Saturday, so we are going to be, um, discussing future projects. And I do know it was mentioned at one of our council meetings casually, um, that several folks on council are interested in finishing Soda Springs Park before we move on to, um, Higginbotham Flats park projects. I have no idea if you all have any, um, anything you'd like to share regarding, um, whether or not we, we, we get some of these projects we've been working on for a while done first before we tackle new ones. Or if you'd kind of like us to work simultaneously on things, just, um, something I could bring to council on Saturday.
Thanks, I don't, well, that's not necessarily new information.
Right.
I think that that's been communicated to us in the past and we, I, I think we were all, uh, in understanding, regarding that prioritization and, you know, our feeling, I think with the Higginbotham Flats plan is try to get as much done as we can so that there is a, um, you know, foundation, so to speak, to move forward whenever we are ready to go, knowing how slow these processes can take.
Great. Yeah, so again, if there's anything else that comes up throughout the meeting today that you'd like me to know in terms of our budget conversation, just let me know.
Great, thanks.
Okay. That's all I've got. Any questions, I guess, before I mute myself? Okay.
Um, no, no other questions for me.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Okay, great. And then we do not have, uh, anyone on today to report from OSAC, nor did we receive any minutes. Uh, so let's move on to our director's report. Phil, you're up again.
I'm up again. Um, you know, I have, I have, uh, Gillian's list. Um, as I read through the list earlier today, I just want to make sure everybody knows, uh, that there's going to be many items in here that I probably don't have an intimate knowledge of like Gillian would, but I'll give you, uh, her list of items. Uh, if you have questions, I'll take some notes and basically give back with you if I have, if I could get any answers through you. Um, or at least have Gillian get back with you on my answers if needed. Uh, but, uh, on the report here, uh, Gillian said it has a whole list of items. I'll just kind of be reading them to you guys, but the chess table for Schreiber Park is on its way. Uh, delivery was delayed due to the original order being displaced by the vendor. Um, Manazoo, the repairs will begin this week. Uh, the total repair cost is estimated at nine hundred dollars. Uh, trenches dug in Memorial Park for the electrical updates will be remediated this week after all irrigation lines are repaired. Uh, several were damaged during the trench digging process. Uh, two benches in, uh, seven minutes, uh, in the Seven Minutes Spring Park gazebo were vandalized and removed. Uh, they're going to be replaced as soon as possible. Um, I can add to that, the, um, the, the, the actual benches that we have over here at the pool at Fitness Center, um, kind of fit the motif of that area. And so, uh, what we're doing is we're going to utilize those benches here. And then we'll be placing in, um, a different set of benches, which will be recycled plastic benches, uh, in, in the pool area, which will actually give us more opportunity to have, uh, to have to do as much of a maintenance on there. So I think it'll work out. It'll be a good exchange. Um, new cemetery caretaker has been hired and will start this week. I do not know their name, so I apologize. But, uh, I'm sure Gillian will give a, a better update and possibly do an introduction on the next meeting. Um, Soda Springs Park Phase Two construction contract was approved at, uh, on October first at the city council meeting. Construction will begin after the coffin races. Procurement will begin as soon as possible. And, uh, she wants to say thanks to all the parab members, Rebecca and Chris, who attended the Higginbotham Flats Master Plan Community Engagement Workshop. Um, and, uh, so, um, that's kind of her list of items. If you have any questions or anything, I can take some notes and, uh, you know, have Gillian get back with you guys.
It looks like Tim is busy for a second.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, okay, you're back.
Sorry, I could go through it again real quick.
No, 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 please, please. I caught, yeah, I caught, I caught most of that. I, uh, I'm actually at work and, um, trying to multitask and not, which means I'm doing two things poorly, right?
That's okay.
Uh, anyway, anybody have any questions?
You know, I actually do. Let me turn my, um, video on, sorry. Um, my question is actually for Natalie, um, related to her update about, um, city council approving the Soda Springs Phase Two. Just curious, um, is the start date for construction on that still? Um, or do we have a start date? Or I know we are planning after the coffin races.
So that's a Phil, I'm pointing at Phil because that's where he is on my screen.
Yeah, oh, yeah, like I had stated out there, there was, uh, the contracts approved on, on October first. And so the construction will begin after the common races, uh, but, uh, what, uh, it stated here is procurement will begin right, right?
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I missed that.
No, you're okay. That's, that's.
I know the community has been asking, I saw on a Facebook group, um, and I, I, I'm trying to keep people in the loop on that and directing them to, you know, of course, attend our meetings if they would like, but they, um, you know, sometimes people just want a quick update. So thank you, appreciate it.
Well, and that's, that's, I'll, that's good to know because I can definitely mention that to Denise and maybe again, the PIO shoots out a, whether it's a social media post or something, letting folks know.
Yeah, people are real concerned about the, um, playground equipment, you know, deteriorating and, you know, um, just, yeah.
Mm-hmm, that's good to know. I appreciate it.
Um, I believe Natalie, um, sorry, not Natalie, Gillian said that the estimated end date would be April. It may be a little bit delayed, um, for a couple of things, but they said at worst, the end of April would be complete.
Great, thanks.
Well, I'd like to just add some words of gratitude for our park staff. Uh, I think the parks look, are looking very, very good. We've just come through a major heavy use period, um, with more to come, but I, uh, I, I really think that all the parks look great, um, especially the west end of Soda Springs Park looks as good as it has in a decade. Um, so thanks, guys, to all the, and, and, and gals, to all the, for all the hard work that you're doing. Things really look good.
I think that, uh, since Josh has stepped in, uh, a lot of great things have happened. And, uh, and I think with Gillian's leadership, I think, uh, Steph Leef has been making a major impact on what we're doing.
Great, and then I have one other question, and I apologize if I missed this while I was, uh, multitasking. Do we have a timeframe yet on next steps for the, uh, new potential park area on the east side of Fields Park, um, in terms of like getting that fence down and moving forward on that space?
Yeah, that'll be a question for Gillian unless Matthew knows about a little more about that because I don't have any answers on that one.
Okay, just, just checking in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I think the plan with Zero Becker's Lane, that new property behind the baseball fields, is we are having, uh, contractor come in and do all the tree pruning. There's a bunch of hazard pruning that needs to be done. And then, uh, after that, the OSAC is going to have the fence taken down. So I think we're tracking on that soonish.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Matthew.
Okay, uh, let's move on to old business. Uh, we've got, um, one voting item. And that's the Manazoo repair, as Phil mentioned. Uh, we got contact back from Crane and they can do the repair, uh, that we had reviewed at our last meeting for a cost of nine hundred dollars. And, uh, this is, uh, money that we can spend from our conservation trust fund. Um, I will make a motion to, uh, use contrib- conservation trust fund dollars, uh, to a total of nine hundred dollars to, um, hire Crane, uh, to make the necessary repairs to Manazoo. Uh, discussion.
Well, my first question is, is do we have a quorum with four people?
I believe that's enough unless I'm wrong.
Okay, great. I'll, um, second that motion then.
Yeah, any discussion or other questions?
Oh.
Outside of procedure?
I guess who's doing the repairs? I mean, Crane is just lining up like smartest.
Yes, I don't know specifically who, who it will be. Natalie, you know?
I believe it's Frank Gray. I don't know if you know Frank, but, um, I believe he, um, he was around at the time it was originally created. I don't know if he was actually a participant, um, but he is like one of our old school clay artists. And, uh, and I believe he is interested in making the repair.
Okay, great. Um, we've got a motion and a second and moving forward, can I'd like to hear a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Sounded like that was Rebecca. And I'm going with this is smile, this is passing unanimously. Okay, with everybody here.
I, I agree.
Yeah, it'll be good to get that, get that going, thanks. Okay, next, I just wanted to give an update on the art walk. Uh, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to walk through Fields Park and see the installations. Um, we got some great help from the city to get those, get those, uh, holes dug and then got everything in and got the art up. I think that the printing looks incredible. Uh, there will be, um, small plaques with information about the art that will go up in the next week or two. Those are not available yet. Uh, but will be coming soon. Uh, if, one of the things that, uh, I certainly noticed, uh, is that some of the pieces are facing one direction rather than say being parallel to the, uh, uh, the Creek Walk Trail. The reason for that is to allow space to add art on the opposite side. Um, which will be determined as soon as, uh, funding is secured for an additional phase, uh, moving forward. Some news for that, uh, the URA may be, may be committing additional funds. Um, could be quite significant, um, to enable this project to extend, uh, further east from Fields Park. Uh, particularly in like in that Becker's Lane, uh, area. And this is something that I certainly would like to continue adding along our Creek Walk Trail. Um, if interest and funding, uh, permits going forward. Does, uh, anybody have any questions about that project? Hopefully, everybody likes it. Yeah, okay, we got some thumbs up. Awesome. Yeah, I haven't heard much about it yet, but I think, uh, it really, I, I think it came out better than, than my expectation. Certainly, the, uh, the print shop at, at D eleven really did an incredible job. And, um, we came in kind of right at our budget, uh, so it was, uh, pretty easy to work with Crane and get everything going. Uh, okay, next, um, old business, the Higginbotham Flats Overlook Park, uh, public information session. Chris and Rebecca, how did everything go?
Chris, you were able to stay to the end, so do you want to give a perspective?
Sure, um, I would say, um, it was a really great event. Um, I'm not sure how many people were there, perhaps, uh, twenty-ish? Um, twenty-ish community members, twenty, twenty-five, um, and, you know, um, they sort of split us into groups and each, each table talked about the plans, talked about what they liked, what they thought needed to change, concerns that they had about the park. Um, and then after that, everybody got to share. So they had a spokesperson share their thoughts and it was really great. Um, a lot of really good ideas. Um, I would say people liked the designs overall and, uh, really enjoyed the presentation by Mia and Robin. And, um, some concerns that were brought up were, um, related to kind of the, the location of the park and that it may be utilized as kind of a pull-off of the highway to like, stop and use the bathroom or the trash can and then, um, people like keep going. So, um, I think that's something that we're really going to need to dig into and kind of talk about. Who is the audience of the park? Um, and make sure that we are, you know, in, that the design kind of hits the mark with that. So anyway, that's probably, I'm probably sharing too much, but, um, Mia and Robin are going to compile all that information and then share it at an upcoming parab meeting so that we can, yeah, dig into those issues more and, but I think overall, it was a great event. It was very valuable and I think a lot came out of it.
Yeah, and just to add, um, there is an online survey that you can take. Um, so encourage anybody from the community to go in and I think that it's on the city website, maybe? Um.
Yes, I believe so. There's like, yeah, I'm not.
It's like a QR code, you can just scan it, but that would be really great to get more input because I feel like at the event, it was very heavily debt, um, attended by Pac-Man, which is great. But their concerns aren't the concerns of everybody. And so I, I would hopefully get a broader perspective. Um, so that we get, you know, a good sampling from the community to make sure we address all the concerns. Um, but yeah, overall, it's, it's pretty good.
Well, the only major concern so far are what if people use it that we don't want, that we don't think should be using it? I think we're in pretty good shape because those questions come up no matter what we do.
Well, a lot of what I heard was they'd prefer just to basically pave it and make it a parking lot, which is not, not really per se, but those are just some stronger voices that were being heard and so, um, yeah.
All right, thanks both of you for attending the meeting. And, uh, this might be a record for shortest agenda. Uh, we don't have any other items on the agenda, uh, for today, uh, so.
Oh, uh, sorry, may I have, uh, a couple of minutes of your time?
Sure, Matthew.
Yeah, sorry, I, I realized after reviewing the agenda that it wasn't on there. Um, so anyways, I'll be really quick if that's okay. Um, so just kind of an update on the tree removals we talked about at the last meeting. Those are all going to occur around the end of October or November. So it's that big tree by the Monte Place, a tree on Washington. Um, just some other ones that you all are aware of. There's a handful of dead cottonwoods over the pickleball courts at Fields. Those have been marked, those are going to come down sometime around the end of the month. There's a dead Douglas fir hanging over the road and over a power line on spur roads. We're going to have to take that down. Um, we closed out both of the grants we got this year, the URA grant and the Colorado Tree Coalition to about seventy-five hundred dollars worth of funding, so that's exciting. Um, we've been doing a lot of tree protection work at the library with, uh, our planning department's been looping us in to make sure that we're caring for the trees in the library that we didn't have to remove. And, uh, we're providing feedback on the Dylan Hotel property as well for, trying to keep up on all the projects in town. That's all I have unless anybody has some questions.
No, thanks. That was also probably our easiest tree report.
Sorry, these things must be discussed. So I appreciate all y'all's input.
You got it. No, thank you, Matthew. It's much, much appreciated. All right, well, unless there's anything else, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Really quick, Tim, when's our next Parab? Because we have a special meeting to
Oh, I don't know.
Right? Am I correct in that? Because I think the Horcoplin Mok, Mok have to have a special meeting this month in order to get things run through City Council by the end of the year. So Manny can work on his project.
You mean prior to, you mean a meeting before our next scheduled meeting in November?
I think so. Am I crazy, Chris? Maybe, maybe there's one in November, but we have a special meeting. I was just, we have some more meetings extra besides, so. But if you don't know, Donu will send us out something.
Yeah, I mean, we're coming up on the time of year where we do, you know, planning for the following year. There'll be holiday break, but after that, November shouldn't be affected.
Oh, sorry, it's the 28th, Monday, the 28th. So we just might have Donu send something out.
Yeah, I'll confirm with her. And you're saying that's just a special meeting just to get an update from our planners?
Yeah, because we, in order for Manny to get funding for, to start working on the sculpture for, or the Overlook Park, we have to have, there's just deadlines that they have to get, right, Chris? Are you?
Are you talking about Mok?
No, I'm talking about us, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, Donu, Donu will, and they'll, Mia. Yeah, they'll let us know.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm curious then, where will, if, if he starts working on a sculpture now, where is that sculpture going to be in the in the time between now and, you know, whenever we have the appetite to start moving on something up in Higginbotham Flats?
Well, I imagine it's going to take a while to create a project on his end alone, but I, I think it had to do with some funding because that's why Horcoplin Mok, Mok were pushing for it.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll get on that soon so we can get information out to everybody. Thanks, Rebecca. Anything else? Or we get to adjourn? Okay. Good night, everybody.
Very nice meeting, everyone.
Good night.